Happy Valentine's Day to order of the Forsyth County Board of Education. If we could all stand and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have before us an agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Lindsey and a second by Tom, all in favor. And we have Mike Valdez join us. Join us.
Virtually.
My mind went blank. Virtually, he is actually at a board training and couldn't get back in time. Okay, we have, now we have our presentation and discussion items. And first will be Tim with the policy JB student attendance. Oh, you're one and two, huh? Okay.
Good afternoon. This revision is a minor revision to our student attendance policy. Purpose of this is to align it with the most recent version of the state board rule, which added a provision for students who are participating in 4-H sponsored activities being counted as present. So are there any questions about this policy revision?
And that's the only change to the one we have now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Also, sometimes we'll take the opportunity to change verbiage. Like you can see there, where the prior version said provides virtual learning services, and we added through enrollment in Forsyth Virtual Academy.
There is a thing with special education. Oh, no, no, nevermind. That's next.
Okay, so we let this sit and we'll...
Vote on it in March.
Okay.
Okay, and the next policy revision is our graduation requirements policy. I'll go ahead and say upfront, there are two versions of the graduation requirements policy. One of them is for students prior, it's the original policy, prior to 2008, 2009. And then this policy relates to the 2008, '09, and thereafter. Purpose for that is because we may have students who attended during that time period who didn't receive a diploma, and if they come back seeking a diploma, they fall under the prior policy. So the purpose of this one, once again, is to align it with the most recent version of the state board rule. The primary changes here are the changing of the name of the transition diploma to special education diploma. And then you can see that the alternate diploma was added. And that's spoken about further down in the section about students with significant cognitive disabilities. So that's the details of that, and that comes straight from the state board rule. And then there's also one line in here, as we were revising this, we noticed that from the original policy, the statement about the board approving the use of ROTC courses to satisfy health and physical education, that should have been included in the original policy. It was part of the practice. So we just took this opportunity to add that statement. Any questions about this policy?
All righty.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, next we have the floating homestead exemption, Dr. Burton.
Yeah, before I turn it over to Larry, just wanted to tee this up for him. As you know, we have a citizens finance committee we've been meeting with several times throughout the course of the year. And we've been talking about a lot of issues about school finance budgeting, things like that. One of the ideas that surfaced was this notion of possibly of a floating homestead exemption. It certainly has some traction with members of our legislative delegation. So what I asked Larry to do, if he could get with the county and look back over the past five years to see what the impact would have been on Forsyth County schools if we had a floating homestead exemption at different levels, and that's what he's going to present to you this evening. So I'll just turn it over to Larry.
Good evening. So tonight, we're going to talk about the 2018 through the 2023 tax digest years, and how that might have been impacted by homestead exemption. So before we dive into the information, I do want to put some notes out there. First is all this data that I'm about to show you, based on the years, came from a report called the PT 32-1. Basically, that's the millage rollback roll, rollback and percentage increase in property tax that's issued by the department appraiser, the appraiser department every year by the county, that we're required also to have a add in the paper for, to tell you how much your taxes might go up based on the increase in reassessments. The second thing is, there is a 5, 4, 3, and 2.5% cap scenario built in each one of these years to show you how that would affect us. The calculations of the estimated tax is based on the tax digest in a whole, not on individual parcels or lands or homes. So if you're asking me about a particular house or anything like that, I can't tell you. It's a whole number we're using, the entire tax digest. The calculation you're looking at does not include the 2.5% county commission that normally charge us. This is the whole amount before anything's charged against that amount. The calculation is estimated on the collection rate of 100%. So if we had gone out and done collections and were guaranteed 100%, this is how much we would have gotten. And the last but most important thing is, the way this report was given to me is, the reassessment number is for real property. It does not break it down between commercial and non-commercial property. So the one thing we have to keep in mind when we look at these numbers is typically commercial property right now is 19, 20%. So when you're looking at these numbers, if you just want to use that as a whole number going across, you could say then about how much of that money we wouldn't get, about 20% of it, 19% might be considered commercial instead of being residential. So we might not have lost that money. Now, here's the thing, every year is different, so I can't tell you from year to year if it was 18%, 20%, 15% commercial in those particular years. I have reached out to the county and asked them to see if they can pull some additional reports that goes more in depth, and they're looking into it right now. As soon as I hear something back, and if I do get that information, I can update these reports and get it back to you.
And just to be clear, and this came up yesterday in conversation with, I had with a board member. You know, the floating homestead exemption, we're obviously talking about only personal property. We're not talking about commercial property when we're talking about a floating homestead exemption. So I wanted to make sure we made that distinction to the public. We're only talking about a floating homestead exemption for personal property, not commercial. Although the data that was presented to Larry has the two combined together. But to his point, it's about 80% personal property and 20% commercial. Just wanted to make sure we were clear about that.
So to me, this worksheet makes perfect sense. To you, it looks like a bunch of numbers on a page and all this stuff. So let me try to explain the best I can. If you look, this is 2018, starting on the left-hand side, going down that row, excuse me, that column, you'll see the different descriptions of the property. Real, personal, motor vehicles, mobile homes, timber, heavy duty. Then we get to your gross digest, minus exemptions in your net digest. That's what the tax digest in 2016 was. Remember, the tax digest that we get is actually the physical, the calendar year in which it's done. So our fiscal year was '18, which covers part of '17 and '18. But the actual tax digest is as of June of 2017. So for that particular year, we had about $491 million in reassessments done to real property. And the growth was about $613 million. And as you can see, there's no real assessment for the personal motor vehicles and mobiles. Those are flat amounts. So either you had growth or you didn't have growth. The one thing I do want to point out is the motor vehicles, you'll see that went down $80 million. If you remember, they changed the law maybe 10 or 15 years ago. Now you have the TVAT. So typically, what's going to happen as you go across and see these years by year, you'll notice that amount keeps going down and down and down. And the way it should work is eventually that line item will completely gone and be replaced by TVAT. So that means there's about $220 million worth of vehicles that they're still paying property tax on in this county. Then off to the right, you'll see there's a net digest increase for that particular line item. In that particular year, it was about 10%, 10.692% for real. Mine's, you can see, was 26 minus on the motor vehicles. Overall, it was 9%. The exemptions went up about 9.6, so the net effect on the actual net digest was about 8.9. Well, then if you go over all the way to the right, at the very top row for real, to the breakdown of that 10.692%, you'll see that the reassessment net digest increase was about 4.754 of that 10.692, and growth was 5.938. So what I did was, if you go at the very bottom, you'll see a row that says millage rate, and has a millage rate and the amount that the taxes would be. So that tells me if everything stayed the way it was, we should have generated $182,304,266. That's your baseline. If you go down there to the actual, so the actual was about 4.74% of the $491 million is what the tax digest would have generated with the 40%. That would have given you 8.4, almost 8.5 million. The growth would have given you 6.4 to come to this $14 million. So the actual increase that particular year would have been about $14.9 million to our tax digestion the year before. So we went from whatever we were before up to $182 million, increased by 14.9. So then what I did was I applied a 5% cap going down the column on the left again. You'll see 5, 4, 3, and 2.5 cap. So if the 5% cap was in place, since we were below that, we would have gotten a full $14.9 million. If the cap was 4%, we've only got 4%, which means the caps would have dropped down to 13.5. Excuse me, the amount of money collected would have dropped down 13.5, which means we have been out about $1,003,000. If you take 20% off of that, that would have been a little bit over $250,000 of that. 1.3 probably would have been commercial if you used that 20% rule. Then if you look at 3% cap, it would only generate 11.7. The two and a half cap would have generated 10.8. And you can see in that particular year, we probably would have missed out on $4 million. Of that $4 million, about $800,000 of it would probably be commercial. So that means basically $3.2 million would have been what we probably would have missed out if we used the 20% cap for commercial in terms of revenue that particular year with a 2.5% cap. Now, what I'm going to do is I'm going to go through the next series of slides for the several years and point some things out unique to each year in particular.
Before he does that, are there any questions about this particular slide? Because I know that's a lot to digest in one look.
Just when you talk...
I do have a question, whatever. You guys give me a chance.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Mike.
Okay, sorry, I can't see you guys, so I don't need to interrupt anyone. So just, Larry, just putting out the sheet, because I think there's another five of these, and they're all basically structured the same way. So top left is real, and then basically everything underneath that would be exempt from the homestead exemption. Is that accurate?
Correct.
And then of the real, between 70, 80% of that is what would be subject to the homestead exemption, if I understand the correct, because it basically only applies to your primary residence. Houses that already have a homestead exemption.
The homestead exemption would only apply to the reassessment portion of it, not the growth.
Right, but it would only apply to individual taxpayers of primary residence, right?
Correct.
So just to clarify, the, we would subtract the 20% for commercial. Residential growth is not in here. That's in the growth section, not the reassessment section.
The reassessment number of $491 million increase is a combination of commercial and residential homes.
The reassessment, not the growth, the physical growth of a house or a neighborhood.
Excuse me, wrong language. Yes, it's a reassessment of commercial buildings and reassessment of residential buildings.
Okay, and then...
Those already exist on the property tax digest.
Sure, okay, so that makes sense. And then the homestead exemption does not apply to my second or third or fourth home or investment properties. Are those included in this reassessment number?
That's, I don't think that's true. I think the homestead exemption, I'm sorry, take that back. If you own a second home, you could not take a homestead exemption on the second home.
But that number is in here.
I don't know that. Depends on, do you actually have two homes?
It doesn't matter. My primary home is the only one that can currently get the homestead exemption, correct?
I believe that's correct, but the only thing I don't know is...
So does this reass...
Anything else out there that might exist in the county I'm not aware of.
So does this reassessment value include second homes or investment properties?
I would imagine it does.
Yeah, I would, that's a good question. And we'd have to follow up with the county, but I would assume it's everything.
So what we should ask from the county is the homestead exemption values for the last five years, not combining it all together, because then that would mean these numbers are significantly less, correct?
That's a possibility, but with the price of homes in this county, I don't know. I mean, percentage-wise, if you look at a population just in whole, in terms of how many people have vacation homes, typically when you look at vacation home rentals or vacation homes, now if you're talking about a rental house, that's different. But if you're talking people who have a second home, typically they don't have the second home in the same county they live in. Typically, they try to get homes like in higher up the...
Well, I know a few people that own like five homes in Forsyth County, so they're...
Those are rental properties, right?
But their rent, their first home, they get the homestead exemption on. The other four, they don't.
They're part of, they're part of a...
I don't know what they do with them. I don't know if they...
I mean, would that be part of the 80/20 commercial now?
No, it would be part of this reassessment.
Yes, it would be part of the reassessment.
So the reassessment value here is everything combined, which gives us a big picture of everything. So all we can do now is assume it's going to be a lot less than this, right? And so this actually shows, this actually shows we could provide, this would be, this would be the impact if we were to give a homestead exemption on commercial properties, which we're not. But we're also going to allow homestead exemptions for second homes or investment properties, because that's what this is indicating.
What I can do when I get the data is, there's a code they use for homes that he breaks it down by, that we can look at that. I would really be surprised if there's that many people who have more than one home in this county.
I think what you should ask for is the homestead exemption value that they assess every year. They have that number. And we can, that's what needs to be assessed for the cap, not all the other stuff.
And to your point, I think we would, I think it would depend on how the legislation is written about whether or not it would be more than one home that you own.
It would follow the current one.
Yeah.
The current one right now only allows your primary. It would be the current one.
Yeah.
But yeah, having that separated out is...
I guess we're waiting to get the data from the county.
Yeah.
But we can include that in our request to see if they can, they can break that out for us.
If we look at the next...
One second before you do. Mike, did you have any other questions, or was that, does that answer yours? And Lindsey, did you have something else?
I mean, well, the numbers were one of my questions, what was in there. But then I also wanted to know, and not like, I don't think this is a big factor. But do we have a standard rate of collection of the levies tax received? Is it pretty high?
Right now, we're averaging over 99 to 99.5%.
Perfect, okay, so we can assume that's...
You guys do an incredible job of collecting funds. When I got here, it was about 98.5.
So we good with that slide?
Yep.
Okay.
If you go to 2019, here's another year in which you had reassessment was higher than growth. The breakdown for reassessment collections for that particular year was about 5.834 versus growth of 4.651. If you take the same model went down there, you see we would have gone up by $17.9 million on the typical year of 5.8 growth for that particular year on reassessments and the actual growth itself. If a 5% cap had been in there, it had dropped from 17.9 to 16, 4% from 16 to 14, 3% from 14 to 12, and a 3 to 2.5 from 12 to basic 11. So the net loss minus any adjustments for any of the stuff we talked about would have been $6.6 million that particular year.
Go ahead.
No, I was just going to, I was going to say, when you're looking at the five years of data you have, was that the year that was the second highest in terms of reassessment? I know last year was the highest, or at least I think it was.
Hold on, let me look.
Was this the second? Because it seems like it was. Because it seems like there were only...
Yes, that was the second highest.
It seems like there were only two years based on this data, and I know we got to disaggregate it out. But based on this data, there was only two years where the 5% would have had an impact this particular year and then the last fiscal year.
Yep.
Okay.
So this particular year, it was 4%, 4.4% reassessment versus the growth of 6.2. You can see we went up by $17.3 million in actual reassessment. The 5% cap would not have affected it. The 4% cap would have been a very small change. And then a 3.5 would have been about 2.3 million, and the 2.5 would have been about $3.5 million not collected. The next two years are interesting because we didn't really have any growth on the reassessment side versus the growth side. So for 2021, and the next year, 2022, growth actually outdid reassessment during those years. With that being said, the reassessment for this particular year was only 1.66. So even on their 2.5% cap, there would have been no loss that year. We only gained about $4 million that particular year in reassessments versus the tax digest growth of about 5.6 for net for 9.6. 2022 was the same, we only went up about $10.9 million. The reassessment there was 2.012. It would have been no effect on any of the different scenarios. We had 5 to 2.5. Growth made up 3.879 of the total 5.891%. And then we had the anomaly year. So the anomaly year, we actually, and this is crazy, we went up on the tax digest reassessment of $2.29 billion. Growth was behind it at $1.25, $1.258 billion. So you can see the actual net digest went up 22.788% for the combination, with reassessment being about 14 and growth being about 8. And then if you went and pulled that down, that went up about 50.7, almost 50.8 million dollars, with the majority of being reassessment. If we had gone there and done a 5% cap, that would have dropped it by $26 million right off the bat. So this would have been the biggest loss of all the five years we had out there. Under the 4% cap, about 28.9, 3% cap, 3.31.6. And the 2.5 cap, 2.5% cap, about $33 million. So that would have been the biggest impact of any particular year had. But you notice the typical five years before this sixth year were more normal years, where we usually see anywhere from 5% to 8.5, 9% growth, broken down between those areas. Any questions on this particular one? Because I have a summary sheet after this, you can take a look at it when we get ready. If you look at the summary sheet, so here's the summary sheet. And what I did is I just took the six years' collections. So the tax digest went up a total of about $4.5 billion. We collected about $77.7 million in reassessment and about 43.7 in growth for a total of about $121.5 million. If you look at the cap, you can see how much that dropped by those years. So if we had had a 2.5% cap, a 47 million, and lost $47 million on top of the $54 million we currently have under the 65-plus, we would have been slightly over $100 million not collected in the last five or six years.
I would dare say, and I know we got to disaggregate some things out, obviously, we need more information. But I would dare say by looking at this, I think you can make a pretty accurate hypothesis that there's no question, last year, if there was a 5% cap, we would have lost some revenue. I don't think there's any doubt. How much, I'm not sure, because we don't know. But I don't think there's any question we would have lost it. And then if you went down to as far as 2.5%, also would make the same argument. There's no question over a period of five years, you're going to be losing some revenue. And so, you know, obviously, the conversation that we need to have, and I know you need more data, is at what level is the board comfortable with in terms of any type of resolution in support of a floating homestead exemption for personal property? Because once it happens, then obviously, we have to live with the results of that. And last year, and I've said this many times, was an anomaly. We did have a significant budget increase, which had a very significant increase on property taxes in our community. We all know that, but we also know why we did it. We did it so that we would be able to compete with school systems around us in terms of salaries and benefits for our employees. And we did that, and we are competitive. If we had had a 5% in place last year, again, I don't know exactly what the number would have been, but obviously, we would not have been able to do as much as we did do because our budget's about 89% people. So there's no doubt it would have had an impact, it's just a matter of what that final dollar amount would have been.
There's two more slides. I just want to kind of, as follow-ups, just to kind of give idea of what we're looking at in terms of what's happened over the years. As you can see, all the way back in 2000, we had a 15.1 MO and we had a 1.98 bond millage. And today, the bond millage is 1.418. We made that decision last year, reducing it by a mill, which would have generated anywhere between $16 and $17 million for that mill. So that $16 and $17 million that went back to property tax owners that year for that particular millage drop.
So that's one mill is 16 to 17.
16 to 17 million dollars. And currently, we're at 17.3. We made that decision back in 2014 to increase it, to help increase our fund balance to meet the 15% rule so that we could have a AAA bond rating, which we have had in one of only about 12 school systems in the nation that has that bond rating. And it's really helped us out. When we issued the 2018 and '20 bonds, we received in the neighborhood of about $89 million in premiums on those bonds because of the AAA bond rating. So we've been able to do things with that AAA bond rating that a lot of our school systems can't do in terms of how we collected money through our bonds. So that's helped a lot as well. And then just to go up, last thing is, this is based on 2021 QBE data that was submitted to the state. 2022 is in the process of being reviewed right now by the state, it hasn't been issued. But I just want to point out that we are good stewards of our money. Our per FTE total expenditure in Metro County is one of the lowest. Hendrick County is the closest one to us at $91 or $80, excuse me, $89 compared to us. But this just shows you that we're not spending this money willy-nilly. Like, say, Atlanta Public School System at almost $18.5 thousand per student. We are trying to spend the money the most efficient way we can, and we have been. Otherwise, we would not have gotten a five-star efficiency rating for five years in a row. And if we had had it for the last two years, it's been seven years in a row. They suspended it during the pandemic period. So I just want to point out that the money is being spent very efficiently in the school system for the amount, for the results that we get, for the metrics, in terms of how well our students do in our classes, how well their graduation rate, how well they do on SAT, ACT, and all those other tests.
We've talked about this as a board before too. You know, knowing that we don't anticipate another bond for the foreseeable future, you know, how important is that 15% fund balance now? I mean, it was important for a period of time, because we knew we wanted to get that best possible bond rating. But now with thinking that SPOST will pay for future schools, you know, that's something we can talk about as we put the budget together for next year. Maybe we don't need to be at 15% any longer. Certainly don't want to drop it too much. We don't want to be in a situation to where we have to borrow money to pay our bills, have tax anticipation notes. You need to have enough fund balance so when those months, when your expenditures far exceed your revenue, you got to have money set aside so you can pay your bills. But I, you know, a conversation that's worth having is, what should that fund balance be knowing we may not need a bond in the foreseeable future? So with that, I know that's a lot to digest. Any initial comments, questions?
I just thank you for putting this together. I know you didn't have a really large window of time to do this, so I really appreciate it. And, you know, even though we don't have the exact figures that kind of help paint a better picture, it's still, you know, it's great to see, it's very interesting, and I think it'll be helpful. And, I mean, I don't know, exciting, but, I mean, it's kind of interesting to see the story of the county, you know, growth in numbers and how it affects the school system. So I know people will be interested in that, so thanks. You know, yeah, I think when we talk about, you know, floating homestead exemptions and millage rates and all this stuff, you know, I think we're sitting in a very good position to be in, you know? I mean, it's not at a time where, what was it, 2008 or 2009, where, you know, you're trying to figure out, okay, what are we going to do? Or even with COVID and everything. So, you know, I think the floating homestead exemption, you know, whether you agree with it principle-wise or not, you know, do you think it's a mandate? Do you think it's an insurance policy, that kind of thing? You know, I think it'll, it'll at least safeguard the taxpayers, you know, that there is some threshold where, you know, they won't max out. And if we do run into a situation like in the past, there is the millage rate that we can work with if we ever have to increase that or not. But I think what's really great is the E.S.P.O.S.T. I mean, I would have never fathomed that it would be coming in so well that we were able to do projects and not have to issue bonds, or think about that in the future. And I think that's just, you know, you go back to how financially savvy I feel like the school system is, and I haven't seen anything to counteract that since I've been here. And I think the E.S.P.O.S.T. is another forward-thinking, you know, good fiduciary of people's money to spend it that way.
I just want to say this for the sake of the public. I know the board members know this. This is not something the school board can do. This requires legislative action, and then citizens would vote on whether or not they were going to approve it. But certainly, we feel like we should have a voice, because the impact is going to be on this governance team. And I really do appreciate our legislative delegation listening to us, asking for data before they move forward on any particular decision. The only one ask I would ask you guys to consider, if you will, if you are considering a resolution, is that I think it should have some sunset provision in the resolution so that we can analyze... so that we can analyze three or four or five years down the road, what was the actual impact on Forsyth County schools? Because Larry had mentioned the senior exemption, there is no traction whatsoever amongst any elected officials to change the senior exemption. That, that's just not going to go away. It, it is what it is. To your point, it costs us more than fifty million dollars a year, but that's not going to change. My concern with something like this is not really necessarily for this governance team, it's for future boards and for future superintendents, that I hope we're very careful, uh, that our community's really careful not to strap the school system so that someday down the road, we look back and say, boy, I wish we hadn't done that. I wish we would have done it at a different level. So I just think we need to look at it, you know, we need more data, obviously. I hope our delegation will be patient with us as we try to give them accurate data before they put a final number together.
I'd just like to make two points. If you look at the twenty twenty three tax year, the real go, real property going up twenty two point seven eight eight, that was the norm throughout the state. We were not an anomaly within the state itself, the state as a whole went up that much. That's why this governor sitting on five billion dollars to spend this tax digest, I mean, this year, because of the leftover money he got from last year, and he's giving five hundred dollars back to the county's taxpayers, and he's giving five hundred dollars to a rebate on the tax returns and doing all these other things. The other thing is, uh, we had talked about, um, to Jeff's point on the, the, I'm sorry, what'd you call it, the sun?
Sunset.
Sunset. We also talked about making sure that we're not, we're, if, if we're capped going up, we don't need to be penalized going down. In other words, there needs to be a cap on the way going down as well. So if there is, for whatever reason, a huge drop in property tax, because we haven't been able to go up to capture what's gone up, we shouldn't be penalized going down. So we also want to make sure there's some cap going down as well as going up, as well as the sunset provisions in there. We want to make sure that our delegates are aware of that as well.
Is that constitutional, though? I don't think assessing me on a value higher than what my property's already valued at, I don't know if you can do that.
Well, we can, we, so my thinking, comments and thinking is, if we can cap it going up, why can't we cap it going down?
I don't know, I think legally, we'll have to look at that, I don't think you can.
Going down the value somewhere.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that.
But I think what this data-
I'd like to, I'd like to offer a couple of comments.
Go ahead, Mike.
Yes, okay. You know, first, uh, Larry, thank you so much for putting this together. For, for me, it was definitely informative, and, you know, even though, even though we know that we're probably a twenty five percent over, overstatement here on the impacts, it's still very, very revealing. Uh, I don't think anybody that, not certainly nobody that I've reviewed that, uh, our, our daughters are not well spent here when you compare it to our outcomes. So I just want to say congratulations to Dr. Vera and your team, because certainly, we are getting the bank for buck here in Forsyth County, so I just want to, I want to say that. Um, I'm, I'm very comfortable with a five percent home set. Uh, I think it would have probably never even kicked in except this one anomaly this year. And if that were to happen again, we, we want to make the decision to take care of our staff. I think we have ways that we can still do that. Certainly, I'd like to see some more data, and I would certainly want to see a, a sunset period as well, so I think for me personally, I'm very comfortable with Dr. Vera's recommendations on that potential home setting condition.
You want to share your recommendation?
Well, that's, that's what I was, I mean, I wanted to have this conversation first, but, you know, when Larry had, and I had been talking internally, both of us had said we were comfortable with five percent as well. Uh, as long as, again, that sunset provision was in there so we could analyze the data. So, yeah, that's, to Mike's point, that's exactly what we've been talking about internally. We, I mean, I feel like we have to do something, I mean, or something's going, I mean, it's going to happen.
Yeah.
It's just a matter of what level. I mean, I think it's going to happen based on our experience last year, and so, again, uh, I, I do appreciate our delegation being, being patient with us and, and having us run some data before they put something out there to be enacted upon.
But I think this data also really shows the level at which last year impacted the digest. We've been monitoring the digest, and it's stayed pretty consistent. And we expect the growth in the digest is due to the growth in the county, and that we need that to handle the growth in students every year. And so I've seen that pretty consistent, pretty flatline. But last year was an anomaly in that it went up so much, it was very visible on everybody's personal radar, because it impacted their bill. And so I think this is a good study to do and figure out what levers are right to change. I mean, we have levers in the millage rate, and that's really the only lever we have to change to, 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 to take care of the budget we may need. Um, and that's why we didn't change anything last year, because the digest changed so much. Um, and, and we took care of that, but I don't think we can do another twenty two growth, percent growth digest year. That would absolutely send everybody into a riot.
Right.
And so I think this is important to talk about, and it gives confidence to the, the citizenry that, you know, this can't happen again in that way.
And to Mike's point, and it's a really good point, and I'm saying this more for the public from, than the board, because the board knows this, as a board, you can go up to twenty mills for your O and M. We're at seventeen point three right now, so you, you do have some room there if you did have one of those really unusual years, and we needed to do something to take, take care of staff. It's not that you don't have some leverage, you do have some leverage even with a cap in place.
Just not with the reassessment.
Right.
And that's, you know, a lot of people look at us, but really, it's not us. The assessment didn't come from us. We have to factor that into our calculations of need. And this obviously shows that it was double more than any time in the last number of years, and so that's important to make sure the community understands that.
So what's our timeline?
I'd like one, one more question about the numbers, Larry, you know, online.
Go ahead.
The, this, this analysis is based on the reassessment value, right? So we're, the question that we're answering is, what, how would the home set exemption affect the reassessment value? But there is another part of revenue increase that's not reflected, right? Just, you know, as the beds are added or as people move in, and that digest grows, that organically grows your overall revenue, right? So that, is that not reflected in, in this impact?
That's under the, uh, growth, uh, column.
Yeah, third column.
So the growth is not coming into play here, right? So the most of the-
The growth is, the growth is actually new homes coming online.
Say that again?
Growth is new homes coming online, or new commercial property coming online.
But I think what you're asking, Mike, the cap has nothing to do with the growth, and if that's what you're asking, that's correct. Right.
So when you look at it in terms of net effect of a given year, you, you know, you would say, hey, our home set exemption is going to be a negative bucks dollars, but the growth is a positive, so the net is the combination of those two, right?
Well, yeah, I agree with you, Mike, but the one comment I made in that, that meeting we had about two months ago, or I think right before Christmas, was, what happens if Forsyth quits growing and everything's a reassessment? So at some point down the road, just like other counties, we're going to get to a saturation point where there's, is not enough land or not enough growth, and that number's going to drop off precipitously, really fast, and we're going to be stuck with nothing but the reassessment side of this. Now, that could be five years, that could be fifteen, that could twenty, I may not be here, Jeff may not be here, but we just have no control over when that's going to happen.
That's where the sunset comes in. They'll say things to you.
No, no, I, I just wonder if I'm listening to numbers correctly, and I think that's why it's up to the clause is so important.
Wes just asked about timeline, really, it, you know, it's up to us whether or not we want to put a resolution out there and when we do it, but in terms of the timeline, in terms of legislation being dropped, that, that's really not in our hands at all.
Well, I'll second what Mike says, I'm, I'm good with the five percent cap and asking for some set clause.
I'm good with that, I think that's, I think that's fair, and I think we can live with that.
Well, if the board is, I can certainly draft a resolution for your consideration next Tuesday night, that would include five percent and a sunset provision. Uh, Tom, Lindsay, are you okay with me moving forward with that?
If I'm mistaken, they have to pass it this session and pass it again next session?
It would have to pass this session, and I think it can be on the ballot as early as November.
It goes in the ballot in November.
Yeah.
So I thought, okay, it doesn't have to go through two sessions, like some-
It has to go through the House and the Senate, right.
And I think what's good, I think what's good about this, if you pass a resolution next week, it's early enough in the session where if our delegation decided they wanted to drop a piece of legislation, they have time to do so. Whether or not they take our advice, that's up to them, but at least this board is speaking, which sounds like on a united front, which I think sends a very strong message.
Yeah, I think it's a, it's a huge win.
I'm sure Wes's question about the constitutionality of the national rule, let's say?
Yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to check on that. Yeah, we'll have to check on that with our delegation, I'm sure they can find that out. I don't know the answer to that either.
Yeah, I think he said, "Just ask for it."
Oh, okay, okay.
Just ask for it, and if they can't do it, they can't do it.
If we can't do it, then it's not, you know, it's not valid or whatever, that's fine, but I think we should make a point.
Yeah, we can put it in the-
That's a good point.
Yeah, we can put it in the language, obviously, our resolution has no, no bearing legislatively, it's just, you know, basically a recommendation coming from us.
And that just kind of, I mean, the only thing we've got to be careful with is, and Tom and I know from when it get, can get bad fast.
Yeah.
And, and then you're, you're struggling, so that kind of, but the sunset also protects that, I feel like, that's really important.
I agree. Larry, thank you, great conversation.
Good job. And if you get those other numbers, will you?
We'll share them as soon as we get them.
Okay.
Yeah.
You can use the same format, just put the numbers in.
Yeah. Okay, Mr. Cleveland? Drug council update.
Yeah, we wanted to come forth tonight, and it, it kind of came out of a question Mike actually asked, and, um, when we had, I forgot what we were doing, but there was something about going to Gateway. And so I realized then, he hadn't had the update about some of the innovative things we're doing over there. Part of the drug council is just education, but we've taken action as a school board to do different things. And so part of that collaborative discussion with the drug council, we've been able to seek a grant that allows us to have addiction counselors within the school system, working with us and with those kids at risk. And we've kind of grown it. We started with a volunteer. If you remember Matt Meyer with Insight, he did a lot of work on his own as volunteer, and he started trying to understand how he can play a role in the school system. He became volunteer of the year a couple of years ago. Um, from that has spawned a lot of what we're doing here, and we just continue to start growing it, and we don't want to just do a big project and throw it out system-wide. This is a tried, I don't think anybody else in the state of Georgia's doing this. So this is something pretty innovative, and we're slowly starting to see the benefit of it. Uh, want to introduce Gabby and Emily. Um, we added a second counselor, so we went from a volunteer to one counselor. Uh, we've replaced that counselor at Gateway, and then we've grown a second counselor that goes to North, but they're doing more than just those two schools. They're going around the county and doing some other things. So that's kind of the update I want to bring tonight, is show you what they're up to. They've been also a, able to gather some data. Um, I'm going to get their PowerPoint up here. Um, they've gathered some data with surveys of the kids that they serve, and I'll let you see that, and some of that may be a little bit eye-opening for us, so that we can kind of understand and have, start to have conversations. Because I think back to early, mid nineteen ninety five, when we didn't have nurses in the school, and I remember I was a part of the Big Creek team that started a halftime nurse, uh, and PTA paid for that, and then we wouldn't think of not having a nurse, and now we're going to two nurses in some schools. So this is the same kind of progression that I'm seeing with this work, uh, especially with our social emotional type work that we're doing. This falls right in line with that. So it's very much aligned with the strategic plan that we're implementing now in action. So I'm going to let them talk about it. Y'all introduce yourself and take it up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dom. I'm Gabby Brighton.
And I'm Emily Anis.
So, um, Tom kind of touched on this, but just a brief history, first of all, thank you for having us. Um, but Matt Meyer is our boss, he's the director of the Insight Program in Roswell, Georgia, which is a treatment facility for adolescents. And he began volunteering in twenty thirteen. Um, he did bi-weekly sobriety groups at Gateway, um, and then two or three counselors joined him to make it three times a week, and it was essentially pretty easy for him to get in there, because y'all might know this, but over half of the students at Gateway Academy are there for drug and alcohol-related offenses. So eventually, Tom Cleveland, through his work with the Forsyth County Drug Council, came forward, and Commissioner Mills came forward when Drew Hayes became principal, and they, she got, Cindy Mills got some drug seizure money from the police department, and they funded a full-time position in twenty eighteen, starting with Mitch Turtle. So he was the full-time substance prevention coach at, when I say ACES, I'm talking about the Academies of Creative Education, um, so both in the academies, and then I took over for him in October twenty twenty one. So I've been there ever since, and I will let Emily discuss how she began her position.
Yeah, thank you. So, uh, like she mentioned, uh, Mitch Turtle, who was previously at Gateway and was running the Forsyth County General Awareness Council, so he was doing some volunteer work at North Forsyth High School with a couple of other counselors and running a group one time a week over there. So, starting with that, when they saw a need to have a substance abuse counselor in the schools, in the base schools, Cindy Mills-Jones and Drew Hayes got together and got funded for a, um, a federal grant called the Burn Grant, and, um, they got my position, and it was actually originally two for two people, um, but they were unable to staff the second person. So, um, I am here, and I do think it's important that North is the first base school to have a substance abuse counselor in the school, so. So, this is some of the demographic, demographic data that we have, that we've been collecting since December twenty twenty one. Um, and I, I think it's important that as a substance abuse counselor, we have to establish rapport with the students and break through some of the denial that may be in the community, community. So, um, this is some of that data from there. So the average age of first use is about twelve point nine eight, and that's using anything, that's starting experimenting with anything. Um, and eighty-three percent of the students said that they used marijuana first, that was the first substance that they used. Eighty-two percent said that they reported that they moved on to other drugs. So after marijuana, they moved on to using different drugs and substances and alcohol. And then sixty-nine percent reported daily use. So that's daily use, and sixty-nine percent of the students that we surveyed.
That's out of the hundred and fifteen students that you surveyed, those numbers.
Yeah, so it's important to note, this isn't necessarily all-inclusive of the entire county, these are students that we've worked with.
Right.
Either through the academies or Forsyth High School since I began in October twenty- Are they all high school?
Well, the, the average age of twelve point nine eight would put them in middle school.
Correct, and that is actually down since I began, when I was like, I never mentioned statistics, it was thirteen point one was the average, um, age where they began using any substance. So it is decreasing overall. They were starting younger.
Yeah.
Yes, yes. So these are some of our current services. Um, so support groups, those are kind of the bread and butter. Y'all probably know that peer pressure is super important at middle and high school age groups, so we use support groups, which reinforce the idea that sobriety is the object of the, of the group, and we talk about topics such as self-esteem, positive communication skills, positive emotional coping skills, and we do that at least once a week at each school. Our sober social events happen once a month, and they're essentially incentive to attend. They, we attempt to make them attractive to young people, and we attempt to make them seem like sobriety can be enjoyable to a teenager. And like I said, we do those once a month, at least, and then our parent information sessions, we do those twice a semester. And really, those are to inform parents, and we do them a little different at each school, but ultimately, we discuss substance abuse information, resources, signs and symptoms, trends, kind of just anything and everything that parents may or may not want to know. So I'll let Emily talk about first. So the transition meetings, what that means is, if I have a student over at North and they go to Gateway, we will transition them, uh, between Gabby and I, to, uh, go to, to continue their substance abuse counseling, um, as well as Forsyth Academy, Central High School, um, between all of those vice versa, we'll transition students, uh, for smooth transition and continue counseling in this area. So, um, the individual appointments are just one-on-one sessions we have with the students, uh, and they can arrange, they can range from any, any topic, but centered around substance abuse. And then the freshman health talks, so any school that reaches out in Forsyth County, we can do, we can go into their health classrooms and talk to their freshman health classes, and it's essentially, uh, our experience. So we talk about our experience, and it's a preventative thing to hopefully encourage them to not experience any other drugs and alcohol, so.
One thing too on that, it wasn't intuitively obvious here, but connection is probably the key word I came out with, is that these kids are connecting with each other as well as with the council. So we give them a forum to do that. Because you're not, those that are in an abuse situation, they're not going to reach out at any rate. They're usually going to do it in solid, and usually when you see overdoses happen, it happens by themselves. So the connection is vitally important to their health.
So these are some of our overall numbers as far as just some outcomes of our services. So for me at the academy, since October 2021, 79 students have attended outside support groups or additional treatment. That's include, or that's outside of the services they would be receiving at the school. 128 youth have attended school support group meetings. 288 individual students were met with, and 981 individual appointments were held. And so to explain that, there's 288 different students, but I may meet with them multiple times throughout the semester, weekly or bi-weekly or whatever that might look like. And then since Emily began in August this past year, she's had 41 youth attend school support group meetings, 70 individual students were met with, and 445 individual appointments were held.
So can anybody come to the support group meetings or?
So I, yes, yes, essentially. I've had different things. So, you know, if they have a family member and they want support with a family member that's using drugs, if they are, you know, if they have friends that are, so essentially-
Yeah, and I was just thinking, you know, we always say start young. If, if you can get to them with some kind of group before they ever start, maybe you can keep them from start. Because once they start, then you're kind of in a, in a battle.
So the next steps that Tom spoke to earlier with the Forsyth County Drug Awareness Council at least would be, they actually offer free services through a three-step process, which essentially, if any school is interested in using services, they would contact Rachel Kayden, who is the director of the Forsyth County Drug Awareness Council, and just say, hey, we would like, there's, there's a district-wide MOU, which the goal would be to get into every high and middle school. And contact her that they would like the, the health talks to happen. And then the certified drug counselors, which would be me, Emily, some other people who are on the MOU, would go in and do those talks at the school. And then from there, if they like what they saw, they would be able to get support groups, and then they would be able to get the incentivize social events. And then they would be able to collect enough data over time to be able to support having some sort of funding for a drug counselor. We would also like to increase parent education. It's not necessarily enticing to say, hey, come listen to the drug ladies talk. So some of the already established parent nights at the schools, we would like to get into to be able to just increase awareness and reach more of a platform. So those are our next steps.
How, how many, how many schools are you associated, are you in currently? I know you said North and academies.
North academies. I go to Central once a week and do support groups there. And then we've done health talks at West, and then I know East is part of the conversation as well.
So are the health talks just for high school, or do you have health talks for middle school, like Darlois?
The goal would be to get into the middle schools, and I believe there are some conversations happening.
Okay. And, and I mean, perhaps it's just not knowing, right? Like that this is here? I don't, I don't know, but.
Yeah, I mean, it, it really is around principals sharing with one another the success that we are seeing from students being able to participate. And so, you know, we're still fairly new in, in this process.
I think this is great, yeah.
You know, the resources are now there that weren't there before, and I certainly can see us expanding for sure. But certainly, we have a need throughout the district. There's no doubt about that. We, we just, I mean, you made the point, Gateway population, and Drew could probably, it's probably more than 50% drug and alcohol, maybe closer to 70. I, I don't know that off the top.
In terms of actual incidents, why they're there?
Yeah. Yeah.
When you start talking to the kids and asking for-
Right.
And what you're doing, that number is much, much higher a lot of times. They'll get in trouble, it's like a terrorist threat, or you could cheat about something, or they could whatever during the time, but that doesn't mean they're not also-
Right. Substance abuse could be the root of whatever's causing the other behavior. Exactly. Okay.
So these are some direct quotes that we've gotten from parents since, you know, her and I have started. So this is, this first one, that North Forsyth High School one, is copied and pasted from a parent that, directly copied, copied and pasted. So it says, "Hi, Ms. Anis. I am blank's dad. Blank met with you a week before Thanksgiving and came home changing to positive. She was happy. It seemed like you really helped her." And then we have one from Gabby. She spoke to a parent on the phone, and she said this. She said, "While I have you, I wanted to ask, blank sees an outside counselor, but the last time you saw you, came home excited that you had both met. I think he feels like you understand him and have been where he's been. I wanted to see if you could continue meeting with him to keep influencing him to make good decisions." And I do think, to that quote, I think that it's important that, you know, Gabby and I understand. You know, we understand, and we've been through it, and we know what it's like to get sober as a young person. So I think that's one of the really great things that we're able to relate to these kids and help them through it because we understand, you know, we get it.
And they look like they're their age.
So this, these are just some grand total numbers that we have. So between Mitch, when he started, and Gabby and I, these are the, the grand total numbers we have. So 148 students have attended outside support groups or additional treatment. Again, that's other than the free support they're getting at school. And then 14 and, 418 youth have attended school support group meetings. 702 students were met with individually, and over 3,000 appointments for help with individuals. And so over here on the side, we have, so we give out surveys at the end of each semester to essentially get feedback and see, is this working? Does it work for you? What else is there? And we have some of those results on here, and it says, 85% said that meeting with us made them more aware of the dangers of using, abusing substances and alcohol. Almost 100% said that they think students attempting to maintain sobriety would benefit from the support groups. And 92% said that they liked meeting for the support groups and meeting individually. So.
You, you had mentioned that in, when you first got the grant, there were two opportunities. Looking at your numbers, and I, I might not remember correctly, but it looked like you had met with like 280, or you had 288 meetings or something, or? So the ratio, 1 to 250 that we want for counselors, she's right above it. Is that grant opportunity still there for another position, or I don't know? Okay. Thanks.
I'll have to say these two are called to what they do.
Yeah, that's awesome.
It's their life, and so they're sharing their lives with these students. And it's, it's an important and hard skill to find people that commit this work because it is hard to be caught in situations. We hear a lot of, a lot of kids go through, we talked about the parent meetings, those are very hard to get into. People don't want to hear it. It's not my kid. And that's, there's a whole foundation around it, it's on this main map. Because it's how do you get to the parents to hear this? Today, with the vaping epidemic, we have Delta ABA starts to creep its head out. And it's a very toxic THC that's in those vape packages, which are called psychosomatic breaks. We've seen that. So we need to understand how important this is and how the students are relating. I see a lot of good things happen from these students.
Well, you know, what, what's, what's amazing to me is how open the students would be to someone they really don't know that well. And just the, the power of that connection they have with one another and with you, and with you. The, you know, and, and what we're doing at, at ACE, and I just give credit to Drew and his leadership team and the entire staff over there. They have put a priority on making sure kids at ACE feel that sense of connection. We have the car rider line at ACE. You don't typically see that at a high school, but, you know, there's, there they are out there greeting the kids every morning, making them feel welcome and knowing that they're supported. It's important.
We talked about the graduation rate.
Yeah.
You know, it's hard when you get up into the 90%.
It is.
And taking it 1%, it's hard. At least if it's one of the 1% of how we're trying to accomplish it and make them successful in their education so they can meet that learner profile that we created so they can go forward. Also want to say thanks to Drew. His support is the only way we can make this happen. If he didn't get it, we couldn't. And so I just want to make sure y'all have that update as we talk about these things. We understand how critical it is and how true it is out there and how big it is.
And finally, Tom, Tom, thank you for your passion for it too. I mean, you are certainly heavily involved and greatly appreciate it. So thank you.
The counseling thing, what is our ratio now?
We, uh, we are less than 1 to 450. I think we're 1, 440, something like that, Cindy?
I, I saw on a legislative update. Did y'all see that?
Yeah.
They're going to try to get it to-
To 450.
To 450, and I thought, I think we already are less than that.
We are, around that. The American Counseling Association's recommend, recommendation is one for every 250. So we're, still wouldn't be close to that, but it's certainly a move in the right direction for sure.
Okay, do we have any future agenda items? Mike, you good? Is he still there? Okay. All right. Do you have a motion to go in executive session for personnel and Lynn?
So moved.
Motion by Tom.
Second.
Second by Wes. All in favor?